Just to make, oops, can you, Diane, it's a sound okay? Just to make it official, I am gonna do roll call so we can decide if we've got anyone online, or if we can just do a show of hands rather than roll call votes. So please say here if you are in attendance. Wendy?
Here.
Kristin?
Here.
David G.
Yeah.
Annie?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Christine?
Here.
Leslie?
Here.
Patricia?
Here.
Rebecca?
Here.
Sean did text and say he'd be about 15 minutes late. Brian?
Yeah.
Kelty?
Yeah.
David T.
Here.
Abigail Allen is at a hockey playoff game tonight, so she's not in attendance. She did let me know that as well. And I believe Wyatt, they just got done ski races and I think they're also practicing and getting ready for states, so he is not here. So with that, I'll turn it over to you. You want to do student reports?
So we have Lucy and Audrey here for student reports.
On Team Royal River, students are writing resumes and learning about unemployment and how it can impact certain groups in society as a whole. When a person loses a job, there are alternative approaches to work. Students are also learning about how some of the nation's earliest educational opportunities. They are also researching periods and how education impacted medieval times in addition to the 1950s, when the Supreme Court declared that separate was not equal as far as schools were concerned. They have been using Punnett squares to determine the probability of offspring for two parents, and they ventured into natural selection to determine how an environment will impact phenotypes over time. Students will learn about an organism that adapts the best to its environment has the chance for survival. Additionally, students just completed informational essays that focused on entrepreneurs, using a cause and effect structure to determine effects in an entrepreneur's life that led to the traits that make them successful. They researched entrepreneurs like Andrew Carnage, Jeff Bezos, Rihanna, and Taylor Swift. Team Moxie Falls is currently studying science by learning about physics, force, work, and energy until February break. They will be creating a mini Rube Goldberg machine after break. In geography, they are studying the five themes of geography in USA states and capitals. For their math classes, they are studying math systems, including geometry, and angle relationships and measures. In ELA, they will be participating in class reading, sustained silent reading, and concise descriptive writing. In Spanish, Spanish students are participating in the Locura de Marzo, an international music competition. Rotation Spanish students will be exposed to Latino culture and the rhythms of some of the most popular Spanish-speaking artists in the world. This competition is very timely because of one of the featured artists just won a Grammy. During Locura de Marzo, year-long Spanish students will go into much more depth as they look at the lyrics carefully to strengthen their interpretive listening proficiency. Finally, year-long students will strengthen their presentational writing skills as they pen Spanish paragraphs about topics related to the singers and songs in the competition. The competition begins February 23rd, and currently we are one of the two schools in Maine that are participating. In art classes, students are learning how to work with clay and create a clay mug with slab and coil hand building techniques. After students form the basic shape of their mugs, they sculpt designs on their mugs that communicate their interests and personalities. Once the mugs have been glazed fired, the students will have a functional mug that they can use at home. The health students are learning about stress management. They are about to wrap up the unit with a fun escape room that will review the content that will be on the assessment.
On Moose Island, we have been training AI and exploring descriptive writing with AI. We will be diving into the ethics of AI. We created self-plan folders and nerves and nervous system. We are on our second book group in dystopia. There are 13 different books we are reading. In German, the exploratory classes have been learning basics of German language, mastering the art of introduction and discovering many German-speaking countries. The year-long classes are deeper into the German language, building upon their skills and preparation for an enriching trip to Colby College in the spring. Sbaggo is working on informational writing and focusing on how to style in our exploration classes. We are starting to explore how our foods get to us and how we impact the world around us with our choices of food and who processes it. Students have made wood outlines of a deer head, started string art of Maine, a beautiful handcrafted box, and student is figuring out a way to make Alfredo on a budget and healthier than the recipe they found. In music, Mr. Scarpone and Miss Lord are talking about a humanities night. District Festival is the 5th and 6th of April. The concert will be May 28th. The play we are doing is 15 Reasons Not to be a Play. Here at the middle school, March 22nd and March 23rd.
Thank you. Sounds like there's a lot of fun stuff going on. Does anyone have any questions?
Will you invite me when you do the escape room? I love escape rooms.
Thank you. Love it. Anne?
Do we have anyone from high school? Okay.
Sure, go ahead. How they appreciate that. Appreciate her hard work. Right, there's not too many, I don't think. So, school updates for the high school. The new semester kicked off on Monday, January 29th. The second semester outdoor ed class with Mr. Davele will visit Reed Field Elementary weekly to play with younger students as part of our curriculum. Michelle is working on finalizing a pilot monthly visit from Mount Vernon Elementary's fourth grade. Many thanks to Principal Jeff Boston and Michelle Hood for initiating these partnerships. The goal is to build ties between high school and all four elementary schools over time that support teaching and learning. We have some new faces at the high school this semester. Tom Tubman is a University of Maine at Farmington Social Studies intern with Shane Gower, and Garrett Whitten is a UMF PE Health intern. He's teaching with Travis Magnuson and Nick Davele. We're also very grateful to welcome Nurse Sandy Hunter back this winter for several days a week. We had a record 18 students earn coveted spots at the District III Music Festival held in January. They were going to do some updates on sports that I don't have with me, but you can just read Grant Remington's new newsletter that comes out weekly and contains all of the information. And then finally, the Miranda Cook math team finished the fourth meet of the season in first place with 220 points. A great job by everyone who participated, and the next meeting is March 6th at Coney. We have a neon night dance on Friday that the Student Senate planned, and we're excited for that. Thank you. I also just want to thank you for sharing with us the Maine trivia show that's coming on. That's really super exciting. I'd never heard of that, so I can't wait to watch it. That's great. So next, was there anyone online? Is there any additions or adjustments to the agenda by Jay or anyone else?
I don't have any.
Okay, moving along to the reports.
Can I do the?
Oh, sorry, celebration.
I was about to say, I do have a couple of, I have a celebration. I just want to recognize them in front of the board. I've already sent an individual message to them, but we, there's a program for County Teacher of the Year, and people are nominated for that. Without getting into, it's a pretty rigorous process. You start with nominations. We actually had two teachers on staff this year that received nominations. One was Carolyn Watkins, grade three teacher from Mount Vernon Elementary School. And the other one was Amy Nutting, Reed Field Elementary School pre-K teacher. They now have to kind of make a choice to decide if they are going to continue the process or if they'll kind of stop there. And I asked them if they would let us know so we can help support them if they decide to move on. Again, it's a pretty rigorous process, but it's also, not everyone gets nominated, so the fact that we got two teachers nominated, I think, is outstanding, and it recognizes these teachers who have a passion for the work that they do. So I just wanted the board to know that we had a couple of nominations, which I think is fantastic. So I wanted to let you guys know about that. As well as, just another quick plug, the middle school boys team is playing Coney Friday at the high school at 4:00 PM for the championship, I believe, right? Am I in the right, yeah, for the championship?
Ultimate championship of the world.
And then if you guys did not see, the Miranda Cook ski team won the Mountain Valley Conference meet. And take a look at the KJ, we had several pictures of our skiers in the KJ today, and it was fantastic. So again, a lot of really nice publicity for our schools, so. And it's exciting. As I was telling Wendy, there's a lot of really good things going on right now. It's very exciting, so. Busy time, but we're having a blast. So those are celebrations, I thought I shared.
Cool. Thank you. So, does anyone have any questions on the reports that went around? Any of the administrators? Does anyone have anything they wanted to add to them? All right, so Subcommittee, is the next communication, oh, I have.
Can I add something to my report? I apologize. The, if you guys remember, there is a trip to Spain and France that will be happening right before, or right around the April vacation timeframe, and we're partnering with Paul Dale High School as part of that. The dates changed slightly. The original dates were adjusted from 4/12 to 4/21. That was the original dates. They had to move it. EF Tours asked if they could make a change. So anyway, the dates now are going to be 4/10 to 4/19. So it actually is a positive impact because it's too, they're only going to miss two regular school days as they start the trip right before the April, or excuse me, yeah, the April vacation. So kind of works out really well, but I wanted you guys to know that the dates got moved back two days and that kind of thing. So I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. I told Georgie Anne Barley that she didn't need to come for that, that I would report it out to you guys for her, so she would have. That was my other update, I'm sorry. I'm doing a lot of talking tonight.
You're fine. It's a great thing. So Subcommittee, the next Communications Committee meeting is on March 19th at the Superintendent's Office. The Curriculum Committee is going to meet on February 15th at 5:00, Facilities, March 5th at 4:00, and the Policy Committee on February 13th at 6:00.
And remember, in your packet tonight, there are two first reads, so if you have any feedback, you can send it to myself or any member of the Policy Committee. But there's two first reads that we put forth tonight, very minor changes, but we want to make sure you have it. And I think I just spilled Wendy's thunder again. Okay?
If I could just make a note on the Facilities minutes in the packet, I'm in. All right.
So you were actually, on that one, you were absent. You weren't present for that one.
I was present, I was absent, I was not there for that.
Okay, so we will make that change. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the minutes?
No, but I gotta rewind a little bit, and I have a question for Michelle on her report, so I know we're way back.
Michelle?
Sorry. Hang with me, guys, I won't keep you long. The podcast the kids are creating, is that something we can access and see yet, or is it like?
It's Friday, but it's not ready yet, but the.
Sorry. Thank you, Michelle. It's a big ask, I know, I'm sorry.
We have our first ever media team, media club, and it's very well-attended already, so it's like 30 people that flock to the media center and Mandy Poole and Sam Watson's helping and everything. And just a force of people who want to be involved in podcasting, so they've been doing interviews and creating videos that will eventually go on the website, or at least the TV notices that go on in the school, and I'll send those to you when you get them. They did one around Valentine's Day, they did one around MLK Day, I think, you know, so there's some stuff we can show you. And then they're working on getting the podcasts, like piece by piece, put together. And so once we know that's happening and where it's happening, I will definitely share it immediately. And the Kennebec Journal is coming on Tuesday. They also heard about the podcasting. Can we come interview them about the podcasting? It's not quite ready yet, but they're going to come to Tuesday's meeting. They meet every Tuesday and talk to the young women that are really the force behind this podcast, so. Yeah, thanks for asking.
Yeah, you bet, thank you.
And no doubt you will all be interviewed by the podcasters.
Will Miranda Cook go viral? Are we going to be? Thank you. All right, back to your minutes, back.
Sorry. Well, no, we're good. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes that were in our packets? Seeing none. In other news, the Austin Bear Society is meeting on Valentine's Day. And.
6:30.
At 6:30. I think you've said that before. So let's move on to action items. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes for January 17th, Special Board Meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the January 7th, 2024 Special Board Meeting.
The move by Annie, seconded by Kristin. Any questions?
Since there's nobody online, we can just do a show of hands.
All in favor?
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Any intentions?
Not present.
I'm present. Yeah, I don't think I was present either.
You were not.
Yeah, that was a basketball night. My suffering knows no limits.
You're on the absolute list.
All right, moving on. That passes. Moving on to looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting.
I approve. I move to accept the regular board meeting for January 17th. Second.
The move and seconded, any questions? All those are favor?
Thanks, Sean. Sean, take over.
Oh, well, didn't we just vote?
Well, we're doing that now, but you still have to do a vote.
Oh, sorry. Any opposed?
Not present.
Not present. Basketball.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
Acceptance of donations.
I move we accept the donations as read.
Second.
I've been moving second, discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote.
This means you all approve.
Oh, yeah, it looks like unanimous, yeah, yeah. Forget when we go to roll call. Acceptance of resignation due to retirement effective 6/30/24, Mount Vernon teacher Leslie Voice.
I move that we accept the resignation of Mount Vernon Elementary teacher, effective 6/30/24, Leslie Voice.
Second. I've been moving second, discussion?
I have one question.
So I have, Brian?
Being fairly new, number one, why do we have to approve these? Number two, what happens if we don't? I know, you gotta stay, like, dang, I really want that other job.
So it is, one of the jobs of a board member is to accept or decline nominations and resignations of all professional staff, so teaching staff. So you can say, like, no, we're not going to let you resign, but it's more of a formality than.
All right, no, it's just, thank you.
So I do have a comment. I just want to say that in this case, I do wish we could decline this resignation. Leslie Voice was my son's teacher when we first moved to Maine, and she was absolutely fantastic, very welcoming, just incredibly wonderful teacher. And I'm sorry that she's, I'm glad for her that she's retiring, but she'll be missed, I'm sure.
Anyone else? 24 years is a good career, so, thank you.
And she's going out with a trip. That's great.
All right, we'll call for a vote. All of you, well, oh, Mandy, I was like, my hand, raise your hand. Unanimous. Pointe minute first, probationary contract teacher, middle school, Thomas Ratcliffe.
I move to appoint first probationary contract teacher, Thomas Ratcliffe.
Second.
All right, I've been moving second and discussion.
Is it Thompson?
Sorry. Thompson, you're correct, thanks. Notice, any other discussion? All right, we'll call for a vote. All of you, yeah, unanimous, yeah, all of you in favor, yeah, yeah. Approval of out-of-state travel, Mount Vernon Elementary, fifth grade trip, Boston Mass.
I move we approve, approval of the out-of-state travel, Mount Vernon Elementary, fifth grade trip to Boston Mass.
Second.
She wants to get him on the box. She wants to get him on the box.
Are you going?
I have been moving second, discussion?
So anyone that's new on the board or doesn't know, this is the trip that Mount Vernon Elementary School does every year at the end of the year for the fifth grade class, so just for anyone who doesn't know that.
Do we provide our own school buses or do we contract?
Nope, they actually meet at the train station in Brunswick, and they take the train in and back out, so they actually don't use any of our transportation at all, so.
Any more discussion?
And most of that is because there's a lot of parents that go with the children, so.
Riding the train is fun, it do work. Done it quite a few times. It's cheaper than driving. Any more discussion?
I know that all the schools don't do the same trips. But I would love to see more, you know, of this, for this level from all the schools.
All right, a call for a vote, all of you in favor? Unanimous? Well, have fun, Mount Vernon fifth grade, going to Boston again. We'll be there.
Sean, can I say I second what Kristin said? There are some classes that have not gotten experience, any field trips due to COVID along the way, so there would have been some additional, but they got canceled for other types of reasons, so it is sad some of the classes coming up through the elementary schools doesn't have a chance to have a field trip.
All right. Leslie's looking to volunteer to be a chaperone.
I'm volunteering for everything.
For one second, I thought.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. That was not the agenda.
We're going to Spain, and that, we're not going to Spain with them? Again, new, I thought we always went on the Spain trip.
I have some contract, all chaperoning to Brian Tyra.
I dig it.
All right, budget workshop, budget workshop. All right, Jay?
So this is kind of the official start of the budget season. We will be cycling through presentations from various principals, directors, that kind of thing. So up today, as the very first ones, is the principal group, high school, middle school, and our elementary principals. So they're going to do a little slideshow. What we'll do is that, as I mentioned last week, we continue to add to our presentation so everything is located together. So the principals who are planning on speaking, I'll invite you to come up to the podium, and I'll join you. And we usually go elementary, middle, and high school. Let's shake it up and go high school, middle school, elementary this time, if that's okay. No, the slideshow is all in order, so. Next year, I'll switch the slideshow around, so elementary principals, you'll be first, yeah.
Slideshows.
Mr. Boston, I believe you're elementary. We're not really speaking units.
You'll notice, as Mr. Boston gets up here, you'll notice on the slideshow, we put in the goal that we decided to use, and if you want to go to the next slide, Diane. These were the directives. I'm not going to read them again, but this is the directives that they were working under as we go forward. And we'll start with the elementary schools.
I didn't really think we had to speak, but elementary administrators developed their budgets within the guidelines set by the superintendent. A significant portion of our budget was allocated to student workbooks with our curriculum. We amplify Core Knowledge Language Arch, CKLA, which is our new literacy program. And the Bridges is our math program for the K to 2 students, and illustrative math for grades three to five. So the workbooks are a significant cost. They are a one-time workbook for the students, but they're pretty critical, especially as they are new to us, new programs and new teachers. It really helps them stay focused online and, you know, facing in a productive fashion for the students.
Hi, mine's going to be pretty boring. Our budget remained predominantly the same. There's going to be one added cost in there. The lifespan of an AED is projected to be at maximum about eight years. Ours is currently just over seven years, so we are hoping to add to the budget for replacement AED to make sure that we have reliable equipment here, should it be needed. Right now, the price tag on that, on the one that I worked with my wellness staff on is $2,027,750. We did find a coupon that would bring us just below $2,000. And I will work with Mandy on that because me being the newbie, I couldn't put anything in an equipment line under $2,000, so I have the regular price. I have since learned from Jay that I can have the reduced price now. That's all I have for our budget.
The high school budget, as you can see, I tried to link the four things, again, trying to work within the overall framework and the goals set by our superintendent. But this year's budget is really to emphasize the sustaining and maintaining our people and our program, so nothing majorly new. Not all of these are additions so much as like a continuation of a, you know, a chunk of change for various things, mostly replacement, maintenance, some of which you've heard before from my colleagues. So I will just highlight five things. First, I'm working with department leaders to plan and to attend professional conferences on a rotating basis, whenever those conferences are in the Northeast. So really trying to be planful about when we can keep the travel costs down and maximize the good that comes of it. We've had a lot of contacts work, we have students doing some program. We've had a lot of contacts work, uh, we have students doing some programs now that came out of conferences that the teachers attended, so just being really, um, careful about what we attend. And it is an expectation that any teachers that go to conferences, especially in this planful way where we send departments, that they come back to school and they present to their colleagues. They might now be trains, trainers for various things. So I just wanted you to know that each of these items is, is part of a sort of larger whole. Number two, we have a thriving wooden metal program, so an additional drill press will allow us to dedicate one to each program, um, because right now, we're using the one for both metal and wood and one of them wears it out faster. So there's a, a cost for, for a new drill press in there. Currently, number three, currently students pay for AP exams that they sit, about a hundred dollars for every test that they take. Um, there is some data out there that suggests that schools that cover the cost for the tests have better participation and improves access for students. So I didn't put the cost of all the AP tests ever, just enough for one class, so we can give it a shot and see if funding this to some degree will actually help improve both participation, access, equity, and perhaps even our scores. Um, and certainly the, the work that the teachers do, planning for it. Number four, um, social studies, texts, and resources need to be updated on a regular basis, and I'm trying to get them on a regular plan as well, so that nobody sees all of the AP tests, AP, um, texts replaced all at once. So again, just trying to be planful, grateful for the work you do, and so I wanna do my best to give you, um, heads up on the cycles of, of keeping updated and on top of best practice in instruction and curriculum. And then lastly, I just wanted to give you just a heads up, uh, we have a, our, our school councils did a beautiful, incredible job, um, writing a grant that was put out, um, in October, September, October of the fall, so we couldn't plan for it, but there it was. They applied for it, received twelve thousand dollars, and it gets us out to colleges and it just really helps our career in college readiness. It pays for sophomore class to go somewhere, it pays for juniors. Um, and we won't know if MLC will have something similar to offer again this fall. They often do. We are very hopeful. They're very wonderful, and our counselors are very wonderful. So I'm hoping, and they are hoping, that, that, that we are able to get some kind of financial support for that kind of work in the fall, um, but we can't count on it. So I do have five thousand dollars, not the whole twelve thousand, but I do have some money in the budget, um, just in case. We will back that out if we don't need it, but we won't know until later. So that's it for me.
So I asked, uh, the, the administrators if that would be okay. There's really only one position, um, and it's not even a whole position, but we've had long conversations about our music program here at Morana Cook. It is, um, something that we're all very proud of, um, but we also know the kind of, um, the, the work that goes into that. Um, and we were trying to find a way to make it a little bit more equitable across not ju, not just each individual teacher, but across the grade levels as well. So what we're asking for is, uh, we currently have a three point five, um, budgeted, um, music teacher. What we'd like to do is raise that point five, up point five, so that we could have a total of four music teachers in the district. What we'd like to do, um, and just so that you guys are aware, um, Dr. Smith met with the music department, and we kind of fleshed out duties and responsibilities, and if we could get that extra, uh, point five person into the budget, what would that mean and what would it look like across the schools? So what we would do is we would have, um, the elementary, we'd have two elementary music teachers, one, uh, each one of them would be assigned a quote unquote, big school and a small school. Within that, they would also do their GT, take care of their GT responsibilities, as well as fifth grade band within their schools. And then we would ask each of those pers, each of those people to pick up either band or chorus at the middle school. Um, so again, they would have point eight responsibilities for the elementary school, but point two responsibilities for, um, the middle school. So in essence, those elementary teachers are actually elementary slash, um, middle school teachers. Then we would have our, um, middle school, uh, person just doing the general music, um, from that. Uh, one of the things that, within that, that we've been talking about is how do we get more time? Right now, over the course of three years, the, uh, uh, middle school student actually gets, um, what is it, a hat, three quarters of a year of music. By doing this, we can actually expand music instruction and basically double that time so that a middle school student would go through and get, rather than just three quarters of a year of music, they would actually get a year and a half of music, obviously spread out over three years. So that's kind of what we're looking at there, um, and this person would also take care of all the GT requirements for grades six, seven, and eight. At the elementary level, the only GT identification takes place at fifth grade, so that's a lot smaller and a lot more doable for those people. But at the middle school, it's a little bit more intensive because again, you're dealing with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and again, they're spread out among the schools, they all come in. Um, so we can keep, um, that music person at the middle school doing general music up the amount of time they're getting, but also have them do, do the GT. The high school would basically be unchanged, um, so you can see some of the, some of the responsibilities that that person currently has with high school jazz band, chamber singers, concert band, concert chorus, and they also teach three elective classes. So, um, again, the middle school, the way their, or excuse me, the high school, the way their schedule is set, it's like this, that, that program at the upper end rolls, but we really feel like it's important, um, because our music program is so successful, and it is really important to us that we kind of smooth out what's going on from, um, fifth grade into middle school, and we give those kids, um, you know, an equal, kind of an equal shot, um, for development before they get to the high school. Um, so again, we're hoping to continue to feed the program. We've been very successful program, we just think we can make it stronger by bringing in that point five person. So that's a request that we put into the budget, um, as well. And again, we're presenting it to you all for the first time, so we can continue to discuss it. But the thing I wanna point out is, we, this isn't something that we just kind of made up. We had them sitting at the table, uh, our current music staff, sitting at the table, having a discussion led by Dr. Smith, and it took a little bit of time, but this is how we were able to kind of say, hey, how can we improve it? How can we make it equitable for the kids? And how do we make it sustainable for our teaching staff as well? Um, because there's, oh, they have a lot of demands on them, and it is about trying to equalize those demands across all of them. Um, so we're hoping that you will support that going forward, um, when we take a look at that. So that is kind of the end of the, um, principals, um, um, part of the, um, presentation. Before I review this slide though, do you guys have any questions, um, for any of the principals or myself about anything that was presented here? Any, if, all right, I'll let Sean guide it, sorry.
Question for, um, Michelle about the AP testing. Do you have an estimate of what those cost, that cost would be?
Hold up, I'm gonna bring you the money. Stay where you are, I'll just bring you the money.
It's a hundred dollars a test, and if you consider that, um, AP classes are not usually our biggest, but like if we're, you know, C twenty students, we're talking two thousand dollars. We, um, we teach a number of AP courses. Seven, eight, nine, ten, I'd have to count, um, and, you know, it, there's a, there's a lot of factors that go into it. I'm, you know, that was, was, this is, you know, to respond to a piece of, of data that's out there, and I'd like to see if by doing this, we improve both access and engagement. But yeah, about two thousand dollars.
And they have to, uh, do they have to pre-register?
They do, they have to register at like November first. So like knowing we have the money, we go ahead and we sign them all up, and it gives us a lever by which we say like, you're gonna take this test, there's no barrier to you taking this test. So we're gonna get you ready, we're gonna really, um, do all the things we know it's right to do, and you're gonna take this test and have this experience. Yeah. You're welcome. Any other questions for me while I still have the mic?
Which course are we piloting us with?
Probably, um, where you approved earlier, a shift from honors physics to AP physics. It'll be our first year doing it, um, a teacher that just went and got training at the college board training camp, um, and it seemed like a good place to not, we don't have to change any expectations. Those are the expectations that we will pay for this test. You will take the test and we will see how we do. So that was the plan.
My, my follow-up with that is, have we looked into what it would cost, point blank, to absorb testing cost for all students if this is successful?
I, I can get that for you.
Okay.
Sure, but for an upcoming meeting, absolutely. Who's up next?
Was it yours for Michelle?
Uh, no, mine was general.
Okay, so for Principal Saroyes, I was trying to read the room, and it seems like everyone except me knows what an AED machine is, so. Yes, I wanna hear you again.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's essentially a different leader that we have in the hallway.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then I have, just curious, and Jay, I have a question for you, just real quick, and sometimes the fractions are a bit hard for me to understand when we're adding on point two, point five. So would this point five be added on to an existing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We're not trying to find someone to just come in for the.
Right, we're not, fine, right. What we're doing is just expanding that position from a point five position to a full-time position, and honestly, that makes it a lot easier to actually find somebody to do the job.
That's what I was wondering, okay, thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that, and this is a little bit of a side, but like, we currently have at the elementary school, a one point two, the Z teacher position. So that one position does, uh, Reedfield, Manchester, and Wayne, but then we have a point two, which is one day a week, and that person goes to Mount Vernon. Obviously, my fear is when that point two leaves, it's going to be really hard to fill a point two, so, um, I'll just say honestly, we're probably looking at the future, trying to do something similar with PE next. We're doing this first with music this year, but at some point, we're gonna have to address that with PE as well, so, 'cause we won't find a point two person, you know? Does that make sense?
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Yep.
My general question is, is, we're at the beginning of our fun budget part of the year, um, and that we've got great slides, but there's a lot of details that's discussed at the podium that isn't in the slides. So we're keeping like a cumulative slideshow that folks can go visit or go remind themselves of some of the detail, because this process goes on for many, many weeks, if we don't have some of that detail just in the slides.
Perfect, we will add that in, I think that's a very good suggestion.
Yeah, just so that we don't have to all try to remember.
Yeah, what that number was, right. Nope, that's, it's a good suggestion.
I have a question, it's in general about music, um, at Morana Cook. So, and it's, um, not really tied to the budget, I guess, it's just a question about whether, so the music teachers, specifically the high school and middle school music teachers, do so much outside the classroom, their time during the school, the fall musical and all of the concerts that they do, and I'm just wondering if there's a stipend available to them for all that extra time?
So like when they do the musical, there is a stipend for that, for any of the plays and stuff like that, but concert performances are actually part of their job description. So that's, you know, that's a little bit of a dicey negotiation kind of thing.
That, that makes perfect sense, the concerts make sense, but like all of that time spent at, at, you know, just the musicals in particular, it's, I'm glad there's a stipend available.
There is, yeah. And Mandy, if you wanna add to that, please.
So just so you know, as far as the musical goes, there's actually several stipends that go with that, so like the pit crew gets paid, um, the lead person that does the musical gets paid, um, the accompanist gets paid. So there are several stipends that actually go with the musical. The play, there's only one stipend for that, but the musical, obviously, there's a lot more that goes into that. So there are several stipends that go into that.
David. Out of yours. So I know, was it last year that some of the, um, concerts were in the daytime?
Yes.
Now, have, have we thought about moving those back tonight? And I know, you were saying about their time and all this stuff, but, and you brought up about parents wanting to see these things and not being able to because of work and all this stuff. Have we thought about bringing them back at night?
So we need to get fully staffed to, to be able to have those conversations, 'cause right now, we're still running, uh, half a music teacher short, so, uh, and the current music teacher is a brand-new music teacher, so we're trying to kind of massage that along, but definitely he'll be back on the table if we can get back to a, a point where we're fully staffed in the music department, we can get, I think we can kind of get back to that kind of, of piece, so. Yeah, so we're not there yet, but we're trying to get there through this. Yep.
When you're talking about GT, is you're talking about gifted and talented?
Yes, yes.
So is it just gifted and talented in the music area?
Yes, so we do, we do have different, uh, gifted and talented denominations, but the music department would take care of those students that are identified gifted and talented in music, so.
Okay, thank you.
Their question, yeah.
Kristin?
So, uh, piggybacking, would the point five make us fully staffed?
Yes.
Cause that would be one for each elementary school, right?
It would, it would lighten the load to be able to schedule a lot of these concerts in a more equitable way, keeping in mind that parents want to see this, doing it at night. It just, it's going to be like, if you ask one, right now, we have one music teacher. If you say, we're gonna do one concert for four schools, that's a pretty big ask, um, for one person to do four different elementary schools. So that's why if we can equalize it by saying, you do two, you do two, then it becomes manageable, you know, again for that person, so.
So this would be your fully staffed?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna get on Kristin's back, who's on David's back. But, so, but if they're still having concerts and they're having them during the day, how is that different than if they held them at night for access?
So they're actually, when you're looking at the teacher's workload, remember how Christine asked about if they get a stipend, you'd be asking for four night concerts?
Yes.
Which is a lot to ask of one person, um, so.
Is the barrier a stipend?
Is, well, it's part of their job description, but again, who's going to wanna take that position if they've got to do four schools and they're gonna have, if they have a fall concert and a spring concert, you're talking about eight evenings now, that, yes, it's part of their contract, but is that actually an equitable workload when the middle school is only gonna have two and the high school's only gonna have two? Yeah, yeah. We don't wanna, yeah.
My kids are in fifth grade and we haven't had any concerts for many years, and then they're, they're out.
Yeah, so.
So all I have is the ones where they swung their feet in the chairs, um, when they couldn't touch the ground, and so, you know, like, I, I hear what you're saying about trying to balance, but we can't get, parents can't get these years back.
Right.
For their kids either, and it's very hard to still work and try to leave work to go and visit the concerts too. So just speaking, trying to speak from both sides, figure out what the barrier is.
Yeah.
As if it was stipend money.
Right.
I would say that, could there not be a way that we could find that on behalf of the parents while supporting the teachers so that these years aren't lost?
Right, yeah, no, I hear you. Just also, something that we've got to think about is the precedent that sets going forward when you're looking at negotiations and contracts, so, where there's, there's a balancing act, as you know, so, but you make a really good point, and I think that's the important piece, is we're trying to make it equitable so we can get back and say, now every parent has a chance to come and see their child, um, you know, perform. So that's really the end goal here, is it's a performance and we wanna get there, so.
Kristin?
Just, I'm sure that this has been thought of already, but, um, what's the situation with recording those concerts that are, um, during the daytime so parents can at least see them? It's not a substitute, or it's not a, it's not the same, but it's something.
That's, yeah, it's, yeah, we could look at that for sure.
Okay, so that's not currently happening, but maybe.
But it's not currently happening, right?
But don't do it on Facebook, they put you in jail. But don't do it on Facebook, they put you in jail.
That's true.
I'm, that's true. Tyler?
I was gonna say, when I was in elementary school, a lot of the reasons that the concerts happened is because parents stepped up and helped the music teacher. So I think we need to get back into that and putting the onus on parents that if you want these concerts back at night, you, there's gotta be a little bit of give and take here, non-asking. Currently, one music teacher to put on all of these concerts at night at our four elementary schools, that there's gotta be some parental buy-in and volunteering to make this happen. That's how, that's how it used to happen when I was in elementary school, because there was a lot of parents that helped the music teacher, whether it be shepherding the younger students, or helping with setup and teardown, or just coming in volunteering to take a little bit of workload off with just managing the event. Because it is, you know, you're talking, at least at Manchester, Mount Vernon, one person kind of coordinating almost 200 students, you know, at night on top of their regular workload. So I think we need to, you know, put the onus back on the community to kind of help facilitate these concerts.
Well, I'd work Smith that away, away from onus, sorry Sean, I'm hijacking. Away from onus to engagement of let parents know what would be needed in a really clear way so they can put their name to a task and an assignment. I think you'd be surprised at what pops up. So I go back a bit farther than you, Tyler, in the community as far as when I was in elementary school in Manchester, where our music teacher did music and did plays, and they were all at night across all the schools. So that person was a superhero, I'm sure, and I was a child, and I don't understand all the logistics, but I'm just saying, like, those are the data points I have to bounce against other experiences that were just really cool, and I probably still have those on VHS.
I didn't see, I think we've kind of delivered the point, maybe we can go on.
Yeah. All right, so let me jump to this slide if that's okay, and this is just a logistics slide. So right now, Mandy and I are working to have a first draft of the complete budget March 6th, but just so that you guys know, not all of the presentations will be done March 6th. So when you see that number, just kind of keep that in mind. So the upcoming, we made just a slight change that I want to make sure that people know about, so we will talk about the multilingual learners' budget, the gifted and talented budget, and the technology budget at the next board meeting. At the March 6th meeting, we will do special ed operations and maintenance, and we move the miscellaneous cost centers in, so that's things like the adult ed budget, the food service budget, the health center, professional development, system administration. So all of those will be there. So the, when you get the budget, the only thing that we will not have presented will be the co- and extracurricular budget line, as well as transportation, and then any, we'll talk a little bit about any grant, grants that we currently have and how they're being used or finished up, you know, that kind of thing, so. But I just wanted you guys to know, the miscellaneous cost centers moved up, and that's just because of timing and all that kind of stuff from there. And then as you think ahead with that, you see those last ones. So we're really into deliberations over the budget, beginning March 20, March 27, and April 3rd, because by April 10, you, we need to bring forth a budget so we can hit our timelines for the May 8 annual budget meeting here at school, followed by the budget validation referendum, which is June 11th. So, so as you're looking, thinking, I really encourage you guys to ask questions and to bring up discussion points like, why this, why that, you know, that kind of thing as you're looking at things, so. So that's kind of where we are, I'll stop there, and we can take care of any other general questions, or I think we have, we have a citizen?
We do. Are there any citizens, any online, Diane? You have one online? Okay. None online, and I think everyone that's here, who wants to comment, more than welcome. Well, okay, any other board discussion, general, I know we also have questions, any other discussion or questions about the budget? I want to make sure. It's kind of a long process, and if you're new to it, I know we've done a little bit, but it's kind of a little different than most budgets.
Just really, really quick, so is there a new draft at each budget meeting? Because I think, I'm trying to go think back to last year, we did, was it six drafts? Or I can't remember. So is there, looking through, it looks like that's our timeline?
So whatever guidance you give us, starting on March 6th, then like you'll see the first draft, and then if there's guidance, then we make changes and that kind of thing. So I think I should quickly let you guys know, also, like, we budget for health insurance, we kind of sort of know a little bit about our mod rate, but the actual increase is going to be right at the beginning of April. So what, what we have in the budget right now is that kind of high number, and then we bring it down once we know what the actual number is. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, especially if you're a new person with the budget, so. And we'll talk about that again, so.
Anyone else? Alrighty, that's that. So now we need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session pursuant to 1 MRSA Section 405 Subsection D, negotiations between the RSC 38 Board of Directors and the Morana Cook Area School Staff Association.
Second.
Having it moved in second, and all those in there. See if unanimous, we're gonna go into a second session. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, meeting's adjourned, have a good night.